My name is Suzie Waddell. I am a citizen of Mandora and I would like to address two points. First, I do understand and agree that Mr. Pasture is by all means a great and very qualified city manager and that Mandora was very lucky to attract him. The problem is, in his letter testifying, he is not happy to work for us. I know that Mandora is not going to change, so he is never going to be happy in his job if he stays in Mandora. As a longtime labor union official, I know that nothing good can happen if you're not happy in your work. I sincerely believe that Mr. Pasture deserves a much bigger and more important city than our little Mandora. He is entitled to work for a town more in line with his style of management. I believe that the only, you know, human and reasonable option for this council is to graciously accept his resignation if he does so. Personally, I want to thank him for all the great work he did since he's with us and I wish him all the success in the future. Second, my husband and I are full-time resident, homeowner and registered voters of this city. As such, we expect the city council to oversee the running of the city. We want them to be our eyes and our ears, to be alert and to make very informed decisions. In order to do so, we extend them to ask lots of questions and nitpick at a lot of points. The one thing we don't want them to do is to blindly and naively rubber stamp things that has been done in the past council. Bill and I, together with the majority of the citizens of Mandora, fully support our mayor and city council. We all stand with them for a better Mandora and we also stand with them against the special interests that are slowly, slowly destroying our town. It is time for all of us to say, the need of the many outweighs the need of the few. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Waddell, would you state your address, please?
A 31 North Grandview.
Thank you very much. And just remember to put your name and address for the record, appreciate it.
Carol Just Gulski, 541 East 1st Avenue. I'd like to specifically address the four new council, excuse me, the four new members of the council concerning the manner with which you have begun your time in office. It is not going to be about differing opinions over oak trees versus parking spaces or downtown building heights. You won the election and absolutely have the right to shape those and similar policy issues for the next two years. I accept that. What I have difficulty accepting is your abundantly clear presumption to have been anointed with some grand mandate. As a matter of fact, we've heard one of you come right out and claim it. Perhaps this is how you're rationalizing circumvention of codified processes and overstepping the limits of your roles as defined by the city charter. I believe that presumption to be a huge miscalculation on your parts and would submit for your consideration a very different and more likely reality, one that I believe should influence your future behavior. Mr. Krail, I want to sincerely compliment you. To date and including tonight, you've exhibited noticeably more caution and reason than your newly-elected colleagues. However, I must remind you that out of 2,503 registered voters in your district, you earned the votes of exactly none of them. Although it was certainly legal, you occupied that seat as a result of gamesmanship by you and your predecessor. Mr. Slaby, congratulations, you're the vote-getting champ of the group.
Mr., please, let's don't get personal on the comments, please. And I appreciate that from anybody, let's don't do personal attacks on anybody here tonight, please.
Do I get the time back? That's just a fact.
I'll give you ten more seconds.
Mr. Slaby, congratulations, you're the vote-getting champ of the group. You finished with 1,777 out of a possible 8,801. That's a whopping 20.1%, or barely 1 in 5. Mrs. Tillot, your district, District 1, has 2,140 registered voters. 19.7% of them voted for you, less than 1 in 5. Mr. Jerome, on election night, after 10 of Mandora's 11 voting precincts were counted, you were trailing your opponent. You took a last-minute lead only with the votes from your very own neighborhood, and I might add, that is a gated community that locked out your opponent and Mr. Slaby's opponent during the entire campaign process. In simple terms, Your Honor, the majority of the rest of this city wanted someone else in that chair. A win is a win for sure.
Knock it off out there, please.
A win is a win for sure, but winning by these numbers is nobody's definition of mandate. In fact, rather than recipients of a mandate, the only logical conclusion is that you are simply beneficiaries of a dispassionate electorate. What you see here tonight is nothing like dispassion.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
This is what motivated and is important to us like, and sounds like it's growing daily in both numbers and results.
Mr. Jess, your time is up, please. Thank you.
My name is Caroline K. I live at 305 Shadow Harbor Lane in Mandora. Back to the subject at hand, Mr. Pasture. I was very shocked at your memo that you read and the manner in which you read it. Everybody was just taken by surprise and literally blindsided. I find that unethical. It may not be legally unethical, but I just think it shows a lack of respect for the other members of the council and the mayor and the citizens. I can't imagine anybody going to a board meeting, an employee, and blindsiding the board members and the shareholders and not being fired on the spot. But our board took a conciliatory position even in the face of, frankly, in my opinion, your rudeness. That was rude what you did. It didn't have to be handled that way. But nevertheless, if you decide to stay, I will be completely happy to work with you as long as the council is pleased with you. I want to work together with whomever is necessary to make a unified group of people in this town. Right now, it is divided, obviously. I don't have a black shirt on, they do. I mean, that, to me, is just unnecessary. It shouldn't be that way. They feel it's necessary, they have a right to do what they want to do. But I just think it's silly. We need to work together, there's a lot of work to be done, and we need to get together and put all these petty things behind us. Thank you.
Fred Cassiello, 8055 Waterbury Way, Mandora. I'd like to start off by saying I support the council that, in spite of the vocal minority, the vast majority of the voters that voted, elected, and rather than the knee-jerk reaction that seems to occur just because somebody doesn't like what somebody else did, let's let the process work itself out before we go throw the baby out with the bathwater. And with regard to the attorney, it is good practice to ask for competitive bids. Any company, any board would do that, some of the communities that you live in would do that. If there's no other reason to keep the current vendor honest. You want to know, is he overcharging, is he undercharging? What's the story? Thank you.
My name is Shire McGuire. I live at 951 Liberty Avenue in Mandora. And Mr. Pasture, I just would like to say, please stay.
Could you speak up just a little, please? Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to ask Mr. Pasture to please stay. We spent a lot of time and finances from the city to find the very best person for this job, and many of us believe that that is you. It'll take us a while maybe to have some of these council members removed, but please stay with us. Please stay with us until we can make that happen.
Thank you. All right, Jim Yatzik, 206 East 9th Avenue. I don't know how many of council was here when I was elected mayor. Before I was elected mayor in 2000, I was on Pioneer zoning for a year. I went to every single council meeting for a year. My wife had been on the CRA for 10 years, she stepped down when I was elected. I learned a lot about the city before I got up there on the Diaz. But let me tell you, once I got up there, I realized it wasn't what I thought it would be. I wanted to make change, just like some of you do. But I realized to make change, you really have to have a goal and a vision, and you have to include all of council to get that goal and vision, and the city needs to know what your goal and visions are. And that's why the SWOT analysis, the workshop, is imperative. I think Mr. Krail, Councilman Krail, the great idea about those three questions, that's fantastic. You know, that's really what you need to ask yourself. Can we stay in this relationship? Can we make it work? And like I said, I found out, when I used to go to the EMO classes, which elected municipal officials, they have classes that we can go to, that we learn more about governance. You know, it's a real long process on being able to govern, you know, from the council. They asked me, what's the most frustrating thing about your job in council? I said, well, things take too long to happen. As I matured in my position, I found out why things take too long to happen. Because if you try to rush things and you make a mistake, it's a lot harder to undo it. So please take your time, don't rush through this, let's stay together and move forward.
Monique Richardson, 745 Hilltop Court. Mr. Pasture, I am sorry. I'm sorry that within a span of six months, you went from working with an experienced, respectful, forward-looking, trustworthy and trusting city council to one that is quite frankly not their equal. I'm embarrassed by several of the individuals on council who claimed in their opening statements at their first council meeting to love this city, this someplace special. One does not chop off the head of what they claim to love. They do not endeavor to remove all the working parts they feel aren't serving to push through their damaging agenda. They nurture relationships, listen to and respect all opinions, offer concise, fact-based, truthful and timely answers to their constituents. Most importantly, you should work to build trust between each other, the citizens, the city employees and members of the senior staff who have been trying in vain to respectfully and gently guide you during past council meetings on a rough road of your own making. It seems some of you are unwilling to work at building that trust with the city manager, the deputy city manager and the attorney. How then do you expect the citizens to put our trust in you and your judgment as you potentially will have to embark on a costly, time-consuming search and hiring process to replace these experienced gentlemen who have done nothing to result in their dismissal or the accepting of their resignation? Mr. Pasture, please reconsider. Some of these folks will be gone sooner than later, and this you can trust me on. One way or another, their removal will happen quicker than that of the downtown trees. Thank you.
Am I correct that communication is an interchange of information? You ran on communication and an open-door policy. Can anyone on council please tell the attendees here tonight what project request or problem with the daily running of this city since you took office on November 17th has not been solved or correctly performed by Mr. Pasture, Mr. Regentin or Mr. Shepherd? Also, why are you not willing to move forward and allow these three terrific men to continue making this town the best it can be? Thank you.
Mike Kernan, 110 Waterman Avenue. I heartily applaud the preceding speaker's comments. I'd just like to make this short and simple. I recommend that the city council adopt a motion retaining these three current employees. That is, the city manager, assistant city manager and city attorney, ask them to stay, period. As a part of that motion, I would ask that you not revisit this again for at least 12 months. I don't want to continue to hear about this, read about this in the newspaper every council meeting. And furthermore, high-quality personnel deserve a chance to prove themselves, as Mr. Krail mentioned, a chance to prove themselves to both the new city council and to the town residents. It's time to let them work things out, a honeymoon, whatever you want to call it, I don't know. Secondly, it's too short a timeframe to go out and allow these people to leave our employment now and go out solicitation for new people to fill their spots. We have important projects coming up in the city of Mandora that needs a corporate knowledge that Mark Regentin and the city attorney have, that needs the devotion that Mr. Pasture is willing to put in. These are the people to lead us, and I request that you consider retaining their employment. But also, and lastly, these current personnel deserve a promise of at least some stability in their private and personal lives. That is, not bring this up every meeting, are we going to hire them, are we going to fire them or whatever. Give them the stability to move their families down here and become a member of our community. Give them that promise that this isn't even going to come up for another 12 months. Thank you.
Hello, Stuart Busian, 912 Old Eustace Road, Mandora, Florida. Thank you each and every one of you, seven council members, for making yourself available to facilitate this meeting. And first, I would like to say that, as Abraham Lincoln so eloquently stated, government is of the people, by the people and for the people. This, we as a nation and as a community, hold as the truth. This city council, elected by the people, is empowered to conduct business of the public and to provide for the protection of the general health, safety and welfare of the public. Mr. Pasture, I'm sorry that you find Mandora such a difficult environment to manage the public's mandate as represented by this council. There is no old or new council, there is just one council before you. Mr. Pasture, you had a beautiful opportunity to bring this divided community together with real management and leadership skills. Instead, you took the advantage of the council, this community, and used last week's council meeting to grandstand your selfish, egotistical opinions and motives to...
Watch, watch, watch the person, please. Hold on, people. Hold on.
To undermine...
Excuse me, hold on a second, one second. You'll get some time if you need it. Please, again, let's watch the words we say to anybody up here, please.
I apologize.
And the other, and the other people in the audiences, and just try to watch what you're saying and be mindful of that, and let's be respectful, and remember that we are, we do live and work here in Mandora, and we're all part of one big family here.
I apologize.
Thank you very much for the apology.
I apologize, and I'll just say just your opinions. ...and motives to undermine and further divide our beautiful city. I find your actions sad and disappointing. I have no faith or confidence that you have Mandora's best interests in mind. I wish you and your family the best, and I will say goodbye.
Thank you for your comments.
Bill Morse, 117 Red Bay Drive, Longwood, Florida. Obviously, I'm not a resident of Mandora, but I do have a bit of a history. I own, with my wife, 51 years, my two sons, Bob and Dave, Morse Properties. We developed Block 11 Landing, and we worked very closely with the city council, we worked very closely, obviously, with Mark Regentin, and we cherished that relationship. We didn't have fancy lawyers, we just worked really, really hard to develop a successful development during a crisis, an economic crisis. It took a team effort, it took professional people to accomplish this. We never got blindsided. We had to have a comp plan change, we had to have a rezone, we had to have site plan approval, we had to go through everything, and we had environmental issues. It took four years, but we're proud of what we did, and it was because we worked closely with Mark Regentin, who we worked with other city planners in other communities, and guys, the problems you don't know aren't necessarily better than the problems you do know. So, think about it, it's a tough, it's tough, you need to be practical, you need to understand there's a lot that's going to go on in Mandora. We're proud of what we did, we're proud of trying to do a good job and have a successful, economically successful development, and that's what you want. You don't want vacant properties, you don't want things that are not well thought out, you want that. So, think, I've also worked with Cliff Shepherd and other issues and have respect for him, but I also respect the fact that, you know, you need to, you need to always look at your vendors, but I have respect for these people, I have a lot more respect for these people than some of the guys that I have other communities that I've worked with, and I wouldn't be standing here now saying that if it weren't for that. So, think about it, it's a practical business, and again, I don't have a dog in this hunt, so it's not like, whatever that expression is. So, I just want you to think about it in a practical, a practical manner before you make any rash decisions, because there's a lot of growth going to occur here, and you really need professional, professional management, and I think you had it, at least my experience has been that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for a nice shot from Sarah.
Yes, my name's Marla Montgomery. I live at 2387 Washington Road in Mandora. I want to start with addressing your comments about personal attacks, and I would just like to remind the council that you are all for us, and that I would hope that one council member in particular would practice her poker face a little better, and that I am disappointed in the high school ribbon behavior of taking sides, that you all work for us. Thank you for not being a rubber-stamp council. Your questions and concerns show that you are making sure that our city is run properly. How can Mr. Pasture think that employees will trust him now, given that whenever he does not get what he wants, he will threaten to quit? He was hired to work for a city by the prior council. He knew there was an election coming when he took the job in June. Now that those in the seats have changed, he has worked with them for less than two months. He said basically he doesn't like them. Do city managers take jobs just until the next election? He says he is at the top of his field, but I have concerns about that since he worked less than two months with the city council and decided to bail out. We have a 24-month return policy on this city manager in the contract from the recruitment firm used to place him. 24 months, no questions asked guarantee, the new search is free, let us use it. I am confident with our new council, they will be able to find a new manager respected in his career who has some staying power. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joe DiFiore, I'm at 204 North Tremaine. I just wanted to take this opportunity to first thank all the members of the council for the work they do, civic duties for the city. Specifically, I want to thank the newly-elected candidates. Over the past 18 years, I've watched most of the elections very closely, but I've really been impressed with the lack of mudslinging, the honesty that these candidates who are now elected and sit on this council, representing me in my district. Lori Tillot, you heard a lot of numbers thrown around earlier, she did win by 70% of the vote. So, I just want to, I just want to compliment and thank them and the rest of the council for the work they do, and that was it.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Epperson, I live by Coppola Drive in Mandora, Florida. And I'm new to Mandora, this is my first time even being in this building. We moved here a little over a year ago, and I fell in love with the town. As a matter of fact, we saw the house, several houses, we came downtown and that's what sold us, we moved to Mandora because of that. With falling in love with it, I decided I was going to join the chamber, become involved, and I don't know any of you. I've seen Ms. Rich, I've seen Mr. Jerome, and I've seen Vince Pasture, Mr. Pasture, at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast and things like that, which kind of brings me to why I wanted to get up and speak. When Mr. Pasture was, I guess, brought on, there was a lot of excitement amongst people at those meetings, and as the months went on, it was a consensus that he was doing well, people were excited about it. The election came around, and this is the part that really bothers me, is we're standing here in this room, and before you were even put in your positions, it was predicted that this situation was going to happen. It echoed through the chamber, and that's, it really has nothing to do with the chamber, it's the people that were at those meetings. So, we're standing here today and having these meetings, or this, this, this meeting, and it was predicted before you guys were even put in place, and that bothers me. As far as Mr. Shepherd, I don't know Mr. Shepherd either, but when you have a 10-year relationship, it becomes a partnership more than just an employment, you know? In my line of work, which I do fire alarm and sprinkler systems, we have clients that put us out, you know, and that's good practice, I do believe that, if you only have a year or two relationship. It's those clients that we have those 10, 12, 15-year relationships with that put us out to bid, some other contractor gets the work, and in the end, they, we get that phone call of, hey, this is what happened, we had to fire that person, can you please come in and fix the problem? And in turn, they end up paying double in the end of it. Now, this is in the construction industry, but I think it goes with almost any aspect of life, that they end up paying double for us to come in and fix the problem that was there. So, I just, I wanted to make it aware that this was predicted, this, this right here, these topics that we are discussing tonight was predicted before this council took place or took their position amongst the people that are at these meetings and events. So, I just wanted to make that well-known. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Tom Cutshaw. I live at 346 East 6th Avenue. You can actually see my house from here. I live right down the road, and I point that out every meeting, because in the last four years, I haven't seen 90% of the people in this room. Anyhow, I'd just like to talk about petty issues. In Mr. Pasture's January 19th memo, he suggests that it's a waste of time and energy to be dealing with petty issues such as action minutes... issues such as action minutes and a seating layout for the city council meetings, and I agree. However, these types of matters are certainly within the discretion of the city council as they relate to meetings of city council, not city staff. Therefore, is Mr. Pastu and his staff at his direction, who have turned these matters into a waste of time and energy, and turned them into petty issues. All Mr. Pastu had to do was his job and agree with the mayor and the city council on these matters, and no waste of time or energy would have occurred. And I would just like to send a shout out to, I, I know these numbers are thrown out, the new council was elected by a landslide, if the people didn't get out and vote, they need to next time. But I'd like to thank the three new council members, the mayor, Mr. Olet, thank you for trying to move things forward. And as citizens, we realize that's gonna take a little bit of time, especially when you're so busy trying to clean up the past. I thank you, and I salute.
Good evening, my name's Sherry Farago, one one zero North Tremaine. Everyone knows that change can be uncomfortable, that's why I'd like to read a quote from someone in city politics who seems to understand this discomfort. Here's the quote, "I think it's important for residents to know, this is part of the natural evolution of any city." Who said it? The quote is from the mayor pro tem of Farmington, Michigan, responding to Mr. Vincent Pastu's decision to resign his position as city manager in two thousand fourteen. Here's another quote you might be interested in, it's from Mr. Pastu himself. It's part of his resignation letter to the Farmington council. He said, and I quote, "Finally, I believe a new, fresh perspective is sometimes healthy for an organization, and I think the time is right for Farmington. I appreciate the council's willingness to talk through these issues tonight, but I think the time for a fresh perspective is right for Mount Dora too. There are residents who may not feel comfortable speaking at this microphone tonight, but they did vote in November. I feel strongly the majority of them trusted that, and after the votes were counted, our city administration would hear what the voters had to say. But just a little more than sixty days into the new council, Mr. Pastu seems to have decided he can't abide the challenge to his authority as a strong city manager. I was hopeful that Mr. Pastu would be eager to listen, listen to all of us. I wanted him to be a part of our great community. Instead, here we are." And here's his quote again, "I believe a new, fresh perspective is something healthy, or sometimes healthy, for an organization." His words, not mine.
Good evening, my name is Kate Johnson, three twelve Forest. On my ride over here, I counted sixty-one mailboxes. Two of them had orange ribbons. That's ninety-seven percent that were completely ribbon-free. Many, many people in this room may be wearing black and orange in protest, but they do not represent me, and they cannot claim to represent the majority of Mount Dora residents. The voting residents overwhelmingly elected the makeup of this council, and we are not heartbroken over these city managers' threatened resignation. I encourage this council to not be disheartened or intimidated by any of the angry comments expressed here tonight by the vocal minority organized by special interests. The majority thank you, the majority thank you for doing the job you were elected to do, giving Mount Dora back to the residents. We urge you to stay strong and get past this quickly, so Mount Dora can flourish under your leadership. Mr. Pastu, I request that you follow through on your political grandstanding of last week. Resign February second, and let this town move forward."
My name is Mike Masterson, I live at seven eight eight seven Crosswinds Way. I've only lived there nine years, but I feel I have some credibility within this city. Mr. Pastu, tonight you have changed the parameters of your proposed resignation letter by making Mr. Regenton's employment a condition of your employment. Frankly, no organization can survive if a leader creates ultimatums as to his position. You are offering a twofer, you're presenting an ultimatum. No employees should be able to offer an ultimatum what's going to be the next un-de- ultimatum. Will we swing from crisis to crisis the next time Mr. Pastu becomes unhappy with a position the city council takes? Who do we as residents hold accountable, the council we elected, or the apparently petulant city manager? Regarding the, the agenda tussle, the meeting is titled Mount Dora City Council Meeting, not the city manager's meeting. You have stated in the past, this is the council's meeting. Frankly, your presentation comes at the end of the meeting, although I did suggest to you one time, and you agreed, to move it to the front of the meeting, because you are the most important operating officer. That hasn't happened. Your resistance to allow council to set policy is discouraging. You work for the council, yet you are trying to manage them to your will. Granted, this job has become a lot, a lot harder. You no longer have a rubber stamp council that seems more interested in charging through the agenda. I think you have the skills to guide Mount Dora. The SWAT raises interesting points. Frankly, your statement this city is not ready for the tsunami of the Wakava Project is scary. If we're not ready, why should we not hold accountable the councils and their representatives and mayors of the past two, four, six, or eight years that have not prepared us? Same for the, the planning director, he has not prepared us, and should we retain him? Council has been in office for two months, I believe they can get us ready, they believe in golden objectives. I'm concerned you're not fully committed to Mount Dora. You were chosen to be city manager, but you negotiated out of the contract the need to own a home in Mount Dora. That's red flag number one, that you're not fully committed. You've not registered your vehicle. It costs two hundred and twenty-five dollars for new wheels on the road tax. With a hundred and thirty thousand dollar plus salary, that's red flags number two, that you're not fully committed to Mount Dora. The election turned out three long-term council members. The job has just got harder. Now you propose to offer your resignation. Red flag number three, you said Mount Dora is a great city with crazy politics, that's true, I don't think the politics are changing anytime soon. I believe you're a smart man, and you have demonstrated tonight, you are an astute politician. I oppose the suggestion of a motion being presented to create employment contracts for employees that are threatening to resign if they do not get their way. And lastly, this audience needs to understand, this audience does not represent the electorate. We held an election, the powers that would need.
Thank you. I'll, I'll declare a time, thank you. I'm allowing people to finish their sentences, and he was finishing his sentence, if he went on, I would've stopped. Thank you for helping me.
Hi, my name is Margot Slavy, I work, I live at twenty forty Hillside Drive in Mount Dora, and I just wanna say that, you know, Mount Dora has survived and thrived for over a hundred years before Mr. Pastu came to run our city government. I'm confident that we can survive and thrive for another one hundred years, either with or without him. He wrote a letter stating things that cannot be taken back, things that not only insult and burn bridges with our current city council, but also things that completely disrespect the citizens of Mount Dora. Resignations happen all of the time in the business world, it is no big deal. In addition, how can an employer, an employee, sorry, respect an employer after they have possibly, or even thought of, or been told to essentially beg them to come back? Counsel, I'm thankful for all your questions, discussion, and actions thus far, and thank you for opening up the discussion for tonight. Thank you.
Jay Surratt, eight eight five six Beacon Hill Avenue, Mount Dora. It's not really that all uncommon for after an election that a small but loud vocal group display reluctance to accept defeat. Not uncommon, but the recent level of anger, pettiness, and behavior on the part of the defeated here is uncommon. It's an embarrassment to the city and harmful to its image. Unfortunately, much is based entirely on false information and innuendo being exploited, exploited by a few to apparently fulfill some political agenda, much being conjured to push an agenda. Our new council members and mayor have been in office a short two months, and admittedly, there have been some stumbles and miscues, I think we would all agree with that. But any objective observer would agree, they have all matured in their positions, and have already had robust council agendas with excellent city attendance and participation. But, and unfortunately, this council cannot even catch their breath before their critics descended upon them for missteps, looking for missteps to exploit, and that is ongoing. The post-election electorate tone was actually set before the first word was ever spoken by the, by the new council. Amazingly, a very meager proposal to eliminate a vote, voting precinct that favored the challengers was made, and of course, immediately dismissed. But that was a predictor of things to come. So, really, what is the motivation by a few to agitate and even suggest an unrealistic recall effort? Is it a reluctance to accept defeat in a fair and open election? Is it that some early missteps can't be put behind and move on for the betterment of the city? It can be because of any effort to remove the city manager. It's quite clear now, tonight, that he's not, has, has not been asked to retire, and hasn't retired, but certainly not asked by anybody on the council. The choice is now clear. The city can either move forward and confront the challenges that lay ahead, debate the issues, plan for the coming responsible economic expansion, or be bogged down in petty disagreements that will only serve to distract from the tasks at hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Honroth, I live at six five eight Clark Court. My wife and I are just starting our second year in Mount Dora, so politically, I'm not the best to be here except looking toward the future of what we have now. But I've noticed something over the first year being here, I've noticed more for rent signs in downtown Mount Dora than I've ever seen in twenty years where I came from. So, I'm hoping that this new council is going to change that. I hope that we see businesses downtown and we quit seeing the front signs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Cordier, nine fifteen East Eighth Avenue. I've lived here since ninety-nine, I have my business here, and my wife and I used to have a store down Fifth Avenue for two or three years. I don't know what is going on with the council, but I do know that Mark is probably the greatest person that we could have in his position right now. I've known him for years, I know half of the people that work in this city, and as far as I'm concerned, these people deserve your backing, not your criticism. And one other thing I'd like to say, and this is to the people of Mount Dora, when I served on the Community Redevelopment Agency Board back in two thousand and eleven, when all of the streetscape things were coming up, then would've been the time to get all concerned about these big trees, and maybe if you would've done that then, we wouldn't have had to have a new council sitting up here right now.
Dr. Ellen Page, four twenty-six East Tenth Avenue. My feeling is, a great deal of time, energy, and good thought went into picking a manager. A lot of time has gone into the process, and relatively little time has been spent at this time with a man in place. My feeling is, the council is mature and grown up, and needs to find out what's the best way to work in tandem with this man that was chosen so carefully. I believe that we should be proud of this place and of the people who are here, and find ways to make it work.
Rose Ann Abato, five forty-one East First Avenue. I wanna make a couple of points. One is, all of these black shirts and orange ribbons are not an angry mob. We're a lot, we're just concerned citizens. It's like when the green ribbons went around all over town because people were concerned about the trees, we're concerned about what's going on here. It's not to overthrow the council, you all were elected. It was not, I mean, it may have been a landslide for the few people that voted, but be that as it may, by one is, you were elected. The whole purpose of this effort, in my opinion, is to encourage everybody to work together. I think Mr. Crayle made a very good point when he said, everybody's probably made a mistake here. Council members have made mistakes. I don't know if Mr. Pastu should've read his letter last week or not, but it certainly got the attention that is needed if we're going to retain him. The point was made earlier that we did spend a lot of money, as I recall, there were over a hundred candidates. We picked what, obviously, the, the search committee and whoever made the decision thought was the best. There have been a lot of folks who have said Mark Regenton is the best. There are a lot of people who have said, obviously, we thought Cliff Shepard was either the best or very close to it, or we wouldn't have kept him for ten years. I guess the point is, we've got a really good team here, and if you all are a good council, and we have a good management team, we can move this city forward the way it should be moved forward. We are facing some serious issues, the Wakava Parkway, the Innovation District, some really important issues. You all need to be on top of that, and you need to have a good team helping you make the right policy decisions and move this city forward. And I don't want to be a citizen in a city as important and special as Mount Dora is, and know that we're searching for a new city manager, and we've lost somebody with Mark Regenton's experience, and that we've lost Cliff Shepard. So, I'm just really troubled. I mean, if there's a time that we should ever stick together, this is the time we should stick together. We've got some really important things ahead of us, so let's try to come together. Let's view this as a meeting for us to come together, not split up and go our separate angry ways.
Thank you.
My name is Charlie Sands, I live at nine eighty Page Tremaine. After listening to the comments that have been made here tonight, I'm appalled at the negativity, viciousness, and lack of respect coming forth. What has our community become? When I moved here almost twenty years ago, Mount Dora was a quiet and charming little lakeside town, set on lushly canopied hillsides and populated with very diverse Florida-style cottages that reflected the nature of the majority of its residents, who wore little white socks and did not pretend to be. Between these New England-style but southerly charming folk, there were differences, passionate differences, but folks seemed to revel in those differences. They were part of the fun. There were disagreements between them, with respect, of course, but there seemed to be no hate. Opinions different, but no one called anyone nasty names. It seemed everyone understood that there was room for all opinions, and that community mattered most. That was the town's personality and its charm. We're doing our town a disservice if all of us don't make an effort to put our nastiness aside and try to get along. Negative, vicious comments are not good for any of us. After all, we all want what's best for the town. We all want our community to grow and prosper. Isn't that the most important thing? I propose that we make that effort now and begin by letting our new council do their job. I really believe that their heart is in the right place, and that with positive help from all of us, I'm sure that they will come up with a direction on which we can all agree. I support our city council a hundred percent. I support our city council 100%.
My name is Stephen Forbes, 8016 St. James Way in Mount Dora. And actually, I have no prepared speech, but listening, everybody's pretty much touched on anything I would have said, but I can add a little bit of a different perspective tonight. I moved, my family and I moved from Virginia to Oklahoma to here in 1987. We moved to Lake Mary in 1987, so I predated Mark Regentin there. And I can tell you for an absolute fact as being a resident, when I moved to Lake Mary, Lake Mary Boulevard was a two-lane road that ended just beyond Reinhardt Road, if any of you are familiar with the area. There was one gas station, there was one restaurant, if you want to call it that, it was called Burger King. And the Albertsons hadn't even opened yet. Publix wasn't even on the roadmap yet. All of these things were all in the works. People were freaking out around the town, worrying, "Lake Mary is the obvious growth center. This is going to be the next major hub around Orlando." But everybody was afraid that it was going to turn into Altamont Springs. And anybody that's driven down 436 knows what I'm talking about. It's wall-to-wall concrete, the signs were very obtrusive, they were, it was really a kind of a mess. So Mark is one of the key architects that created, actually, even more information than I knew that Mr. Rollson mentioned earlier. He was a key architect behind that. The end result is Lake Mary is now one of the most desirable suburbs, if not the most desirable, in the entire Orlando metro area. And I can tell you for a fact, it was done the right way. I lived there the whole time. The tax base was excellent. He created jobs that were beyond belief. We have Mitsubishi, we had Convergys, we had Fiserv, we have all these other companies. At the time, Cincinnati Microwave, the people that made the Escort Radar detector, they were all there. And those buildings are still there. They, they are really good jobs. It's a corridor that is the envy of all, even have a major Blue Cross Blue Shield office there. And all of this was done by Mark Regentin. And I think everybody's missing that point, and if we let him go, this would be a major blow and a big mistake for Mount Dora.
Jack Grant, 7870 Crosswinds Way, Mount Dora. I think, I'm a little bit confused. I've heard a number of people talk about Mark Regentin in a positive light. I've attended numerous city council meetings, et cetera. I know people who've worked with Mark Regentin, and it's pretty universally held in pretty high regard. But I'm not sure tonight is about Mark Regentin, as I understand it. I think it's about Mr. Pastoo. In fact, if I'm not correct, I believe Mark Regentin was a candidate for the position, was he not? And I think there are some board members who supported that, and there are some that did not, and ultimately, you know, he wasn't chosen for the ultimate position. I think his credentials, his accomplishments are well-known, and I'm not aware that anybody's trying to release him. I'm just not aware of that at the moment. But what I do know about his teamwork, and as I look across the folks that I know, some more than others, I know some of your backgrounds, and I admire them, and I believe you're sincere, and I think you'll make the right decisions. I also know that on occasion, there have been talented people in sports, like Terrell Owens and people of that, that had unquestionable talent. But sometimes, they just had a hard time being part of the team. I don't know if that's what you're dealing with here. I really do not. But I am trusting that you'll make the right decisions, and if someone wants to be a team member and can be a team member and can contribute, then great. And if the elements aren't there, I'm going to trust you to find somebody that can. So thank you for your service.
My name is Courtney Martin. I live at 431 East 7th Avenue in Mount Dora. I would like to address to the mayor a somewhat disingenuous comment that he made not too long ago this evening, which was that no one has ever suggested firing Mark Regentin. What you have in fact suggested is eliminating his job, which is tantamount to getting rid of him. The second comment I'm going to address to Ms. Tillitt concerning reviewing the contract for Mr. Shepard as city attorney. I totally agree with you. It is good practice to regularly review contracts. What I do not understand is the motion that you made at the last council meeting to reduce the standards of the city attorney, to suggest that we look for a less qualified city attorney. So just to bring those two points up, they were both specifically addressed this evening, and that's my response to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Wheeler. I'd like to address my comments to my fellow residents. I spent decades as a consultant head for the state of Florida, city of Tampa, Boca Raton, West Palm, Delray Beach, and other cities nationally. I would like to assure you that requests for qualifications and proposals on a periodic basis for legal and other services to, for governments is standard practice, and if it's not done, it's incompetence. I'd like to assure you that employees of cities, states, political subdivisions, counties serve at the discretion of the city manager. They are evaluated, usually yearly. They're fired, they're retained, they receive salaries. That's not a bailiwick of the council or of the governing body. However, when it comes to the chief administrative officer, that's a different story. When the chief administrative officer directly challenges the city council or government entity, that is a challenge that cannot go unanswered. I don't know what your decision will be, but I do know that in the case of a request for proposal, in the case of keeping your hands away from any decision with regard to Mr. Regentin and the Planning and Zoning Department, and the challenge you receive from the city manager is being handled in a correct and appropriate manner. And thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Mary Haddon, 415 East 3rd Avenue. I know there are a lot of people here that might like to express, who are employees of Mr. Regentin. I'm trying, I'm sorry, Mr. Pastoo. From what I've understood today is that we, the citizens, you all work for us, but the employees work for Mr. Pastoo. Is that right? Is that clear? And I think there are a lot here who aren't allowed to say anything. Could they just stand up and show their support?
No.
For how much they like working for Mr. Pastoo?
No, not right now. We're just taking comments. We're taking comments from the public and leave it at that right now. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to see those employees here to support him. I appreciate Mayor Jerome, your comments at the beginning, explaining the charter and some of the concerns. You were trying to clear the air, and I felt that was very helpful. I appreciate Mr. Pastoo for being so vulnerable and sharing his personal home life, which I think is very hard in a huge group like this. I appreciate what Mr. Krail started out with, which is a relationship that's going on here. This is an incredibly divided community, and I feel that you all could be a model for all the people here who are divided if you can come together and you all work together. I know that sounds kind of hippie-ish, or mammy-pammy, or fairy-ish, or whatever, but I feel that you all are an important role, and you are the role models. And if you all can learn to work this out and work together, maybe the citizens can come together and stop the name-calling and everybody being so tied to their rightness. And I'm right. I mean, I practice kind of left, but, but in my opinions, I get very right. And I feel by us all getting so right, Mount Dora is divided, and I would request that you all follow the lead that Mr. Krail started with working on trying to find a way for this community to heal. I wrote a letter to Mr. Pastoo saying that I think, maybe Mr. Krail said, that miracles can happen. So I would request that you all would try to resolve the issues and model for the rest of the city.
Okay, seeing no one else at the, at the microphones, let's come back to the council. And for any other, any other comments?
Could, is a point of...
Go ahead.
Or would like a four-minute recess be appropriate?
No, a five-minute, a 10-minute would be more appropriate. I will, I will declare a recess for about 10 minutes, please. Thank you.